Alderman Santi?
Here.
Alderman Glab?
Here.
Alderman Schaefer?
Here.
Alderman Curry?
Here.
Alderman Condon?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
The city of McHenry's mission statement is as follows. The city of McHenry is dedicated to providing its citizens, businesses, and visitors with the highest quality of programs and services in a customer-oriented, efficient, and fiscally responsible manner. The first item on the agenda this evening is the public comments section. Three people have signed in, but I believe two of you. Mr. Weiner, I didn't know if you signed in to make a statement or just for your item. And Bob Hunter, you just want to make a statement at the time of the item, is that correct?
Yes.
I would ask you two to wait then until that item comes up on the agenda. And we have Bob Funk from sixteen twenty-two North Riverside. Did you want to make a comment, Bob? Did you? Were you wishing to make a public comment or are you just here to listen?
No, I don't want to make a comment.
Okay, please do that at this time.
You're not going to do this in order of the agenda, right?
It's an agenda item.
That is an agenda item. The public comment is an agenda item. Yes, please.
I'm here in relation to item number eight, which is an ordinance for serving food and alcohol outside a property adjacent to my property on Riverside Drive. It doesn't talk about construction, but I'm pretty sure this includes the construction of the outside deck area in back of the building. And that would, I guess, eliminate the little parking that that establishment already had. That would pretty much eliminate the parking, the way I see it. I don't have the plans here. I'm opposed to that based on the congestion in that area and the limited parking already in effect for the existing businesses. That's my main concern. We do have private parking for my property, but it does take energy and time just to keep it available so that our customers are the ones parking there, not the customers from the adjoining businesses. And I'm just stating my position.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a motion to approve the consent agenda. Looking for that motion? Alderman Schaefer?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second? Alderman Curry?
Sorry.
Discussion Alderman Schaefer?
No questions.
Alderman Curry?
Just one quick question on the fieldstone payment, which obviously we're going to do. But I noticed that the total project for this contractor, that portion of it, is like eleven, a little over eleven percent over the not to exceed number. And I know we approved, I can't recall when it was, we approved something earlier on change request. Could you just remind me of what the earlier one was?
The earlier one was the alignment of the hatches to the pump locations. That was another one that we couldn't do until we did the pump around and got the wet well empty.
Okay. So both of them were things that we knew that we weren't going to know until we get into it?
Right, right. It's too expensive to do a pump around. Right, it's designed. We do it during construction. Thank you.
Alderman Condon, no questions. Alderman Santi?
I have no questions.
Alderman Glab?
Okay.
Please call the roll. Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Motion carry. Thank you. The next item is a motion to approve connection to the city's sanitary sewer system at residential rates for the property located at twenty-three oh-one West Country Lane and the waiver of the annexation requirement to the city of McHenry.
Thank you, Mayor. Council is being asked to consider permitting the property located at twenty-three oh-one West Country Lane to connect to the city's sanitary sewer system without annexation to the city and payment of connection and user fees at residential rates.
Thank you. Looking for a motion on this item? Alderman Santi?
I will make the motion to approve the connection to the city's sanitary system at residential rates for the property located twenty-three oh-one West Country Lane and waiver of the annexation agreement to the city of McHenry as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second? Alderman Condon? Discussion Alderman Santi?
We've been presented by this once before and I voted yes for that and I will do so tonight. I guess the one question I have into the future here, can we draw a line? Can we draw a number here in regards to, you know, when it gets to a certain amount of locations, you know, on that street or in that area outside the city where maybe it's time to look at some sort of annexation agreement for that whole area?
Well, I will say that the sewer actually only runs a short distance and is available to only a I think it's roughly, without counting here, twelve properties on Country Lane. I don't have, I did not include the full subdivision map in relation to where our sewer is, but there's about twelve properties total on Country Lane and that's it. So that would be the cap of people that could annex or could hook up to our sewer that reside on Country Lane.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Glab?
Yeah, I feel it's a very touchy subject. Granted, we don't want to leave anybody just sitting out there, but in the past, it's always been that if you wanted to be hooked up to the city, you had to annex into the city. And granted, I mean, how do we take in properties that are outside the city, let them hook up and then we don't even charge them the non-resident rate, but we charge them the resident rate? Now, as a user of the service, I'm a stockholder like a lot of the residents in the city. And we're paying for the expansions and everything else on our sewer treatment plant we have for years and we've continuously doing it for years. And somebody comes in and they're not even annexing to the city and they're getting the same rate as what I would be paying. I find that kind of hard to swallow. That's all I can.
Alderman Schaefer?
Is that whole area now contiguous with the city? I mean, all four sides are surrounded by the city, if I'm not mistaken, correct? No. What side is it? East.
East of Chapel Hill.
Chapel Hill Road?
Yes.
So the east side is our city limit? Any? Yeah, I think so. So the only question I have.
Alderman Curry?
Well, Alderman Santi asked the question, but just to clarify. So there's roughly ten to twelve properties, whatever it is along there. It's only the ones that back up to the current sewer line that could connect? Or could there be even a possibility of going across that street in some point in the future?
I mean, I can't rule out the possibility of someone engineering something to hook in. I think we would have to look at that if that came up to us. But immediately, there's only ten to twelve houses that back up to our existing sewer.
And this property is basically right beside the property that we had come before us?
It is right, right next door.
Right next door. Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Condon?
Well, just a comment that while I appreciate what Alderman Glab has presented, I also, I guess, I think it's outweighed by the fact that his staff had pointed out in our agenda supplement that if they were made to annex, then we would be also responsible for all of city services, including, as it states, police protection code enforcement, road maintenance, snowpalling, et cetera. So I think in this particular case, it makes more sense to not annex as staff has presented and still proceed with allowing them to hook up.
Thank you for this services. Alderman Santi?
We have an agreement with McCollum Lake in regards to what their rate is, right? And that's a little bit higher than ours?
No, it's the same as the city rate.
They're the same exactly. They pay the same as our residents?
Correct.
With their agreement?
Right.
Okay. Because, I mean, just further thought is that, you know, if we could look at some type of agreement in the future where, you know, maybe there is more of a, you know, a larger percentage than what we take in as a resident in regards to this situation. We are giving them definite benefit here. And I know some of our services will be opened up with an annexation. But maybe just because, you know, at some point in the future, if we look at it, we could see a possibility of maybe increasing them slightly higher just because they are annexing and they are part of the city yet and maybe bring it down to a regular rate at some point in the future. I just, you know, I know we're going down this path and we started it. And I just, not that I want to stop it. I just want to make sure that we're recovering what we should as a city to make sure we are protecting our residents that are here and paying the price for all our services. Thank you.
Alderman Schaefer?
They're also getting charged the new user fees that are along with our current residents as well, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Alderman Glab?
Yeah, hasn't been in the past where non-resident properties were paying one and a half times the city?
In the past?
Correct. But that was properties that weren't continuous that we could annex in. They're paid, we have some that are paid one and a half times, correct? So. Felt I needed to clarify that, the fact that we do have users out there that are paying one and a half times the city rate because they're not in the city.
If I could just say that the first one that annexed in last month or did not annex in, they were willing to annex in. And we, you know, in that staff report, it stated that it would not be advantageous to the city because of the services that we would have to provide. We felt that it would not benefit them and that's why we chose the variance process.
We should have something at least written in the agreement, I think, that basically states that a trigger, whether it's X amount to hook up or whatever, that they all have to annex in. That we're not forcing anybody in, you know. But down the road, when, let's say there's ten or twelve or whatever properties out there that need the service, that triggers it to where they automatically have to come in. I mean, it would be like a pre-annexation agreement that we have out there. If you become contiguous with the city, then you annex in, you know. And of course, you know, if somebody is, you know, contiguous, they don't get annexed in at the time. But the same with this. I mean, if, we're talking two properties now with potential of what, eventually twelve. Let's say when five or six that I just think that there should be something there. That, I mean, discussions of annexation of this area has probably come up on several occasions over the last twenty years that I can remember. And I just think sooner or later it's going to happen. The question is, is how far down there? You know, it's just like we talked about. The areas across Crystal Lake Road from the high school. We had discussions on those that were outside the city. I don't want to get off the beaten path because we're basically talking about the rates, but I just don't see why we're giving them a city rate if they're not in the city. I just think they should give the non-residents one and a half times. My opinion. And that's all I can.
Alderman Curry, then Alderman Schaefer?
As you just mentioned, Ross, the last property they weren't willing to annex, but we chose not to. Is that the case with this property? Are they willing to annex?
I believe we basically said, I don't know that I asked the question. I mean, I can be honest with you. I didn't ask the question, so, because I knew that we still would not look at two properties because it would not benefit the city at all, nor the resident to have them annex in.
I just wondered if we were getting, you know, sort of like not really an agreement, but that they would be willing to do that if at some point in the future that that's what the city decided was necessary. So, you know, there's no pushback, in other words, I guess. But now that, as Alderman Schaefer pointed out, all the fees are charged. Correct me if I'm mistaken, but water and sewer is pretty much a I mean, it's supposed to be pretty much paid for. It's paid, pays the cost. It's paid by the users, right? So as long as we have our rate structure, which I know we spent a lot of time on, correct? And the capital charges are all there, then any user is essentially paying their share, right?
Correct.
As far as the load on the system and all that. And, you know, with one or two properties, we're not too concerned about the load, right? All right. Thank you.
Alderman Schaefer?
I just wanted to make sure that the usage, is the usage fee included in the motion? Because it just actually states rates.
It's the current fee structure. So what we, Aqua supplies their water to them, private water system. We get a meter reading from them each month and then base their sewage off of that meter reading.
I'm, but what about our additional fees that we have now that every?
Those are built into the basic residential rate. So they're added on as well.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Alderman Glab?
Do I get that right? Did we explain that we call the water companies to get theirs?
That's correct. We contact.
Why would it be that our staff has to call them? Why wouldn't it be that put the onus on them for them to have to contact us?
They may, I'm sorry, I guess I misspoke. They may do it that way. I'm not exactly sure how we get those rates. I know that our water billing department gets monthly.
Further questions? Seeing on, please call the roll. Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
No.
Motion carry. Thank you. The next item is a motion to approve an ordinance granting a use variance to allow a restaurant with outdoor seating, including outdoor service of food and alcohol and outdoor entertainment for the property located at fourteen oh-two North Riverside Drive. Doug?
Thank you, Mayor. The council is being asked to consider approval of a use variance to allow a restaurant serving alcohol with outdoor seating, as well as service and consumption of food and alcohol outdoors and outdoor entertainment at fourteen oh-two North Riverside Drive.
Thank you. Looking for a motion on this item? Alderman Schaefer?
I'll make the motion to approve this variance for serving alcohol and outdoor seating at fourteen oh-two North Riverside Drive.
And entertainment?
As per, yeah, and entertainment rules as presented.
Second, Alderman Santi?
I will second the motion.
Discussion Alderman Schaefer?
You know, this is, this is something that's been ongoing and I know there is some concern from some of the business neighbors regarding issues that are not, not in this variance or in this ordinance, such as parking. And again, I, if people are going to want to go to those establishments as they do there, I believe they're going to find those parking instances and parking places. I do have a concern for the businesses along the opposite side on Riverside Drive, on the south side of Pearl. If there is, and I don't know how you would do this other than making sure if you do see people parking there that are not residents or employees or whatever is allowed to park there, that our rules are that you call for a tow, correct?
If they have signs posted, I believe they do, unauthorized vehicles will be towed. That we don't enforce the parking on private property.
Okay. That, I mean, but that would be their, their issue is to call for a tow. That's how it's stated? Okay. And in talking to the police department regarding police calls and noise and things, that's been addressed since the last time we had a meeting. And I know it's going to be watched even greater with this outdoor use. I do have some questions about how some things are set up, but I'll wait to listen to some others regarding it. But I just want to address those things because I don't think they're related solely to this vote, but just need to be addressed.
Thank you. Alderman Curry?
Well, the comments we made on the parking are ready. But the question I have is that in here, it indicates that they are perpetually limited from public access from, like, from the riverside of the property. It has to be fully fenced. And I guess my question is, why are we requiring this business to do that when we have others that we don't require enough?
Well, they have the, you mean, the seating area?
Well, unless I misread it, it looks to me like there's a requirement that, for example, somebody, let me finish the riverwalk, let's say, somebody coming from the river. There's other businesses that could come into the business from the back. And what this says is you cannot enter from that side. You have to go through the, through the building. And I guess I don't understand why this business is being limited versus others.
We've had the same comment and condition on other places that have outdoor seating with alcohol and food. They're fenced off. We do say if it's an emergency, you can go out. But generally, it's just to keep the people from leaving the outside area with alcohol.
But we have a, we have a restaurant just two doors up that they can, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's in their stairway and come right up off from the river, right? Somebody can pull up in a boat, come in after the fox is a restaurant. So if you can do that there, I guess I just don't understand why we're limiting this particular business.
That was a condition. This is a two-tiered deck. The patio is that great. So it's just, it's a physical barrier, a means of saying, you know, stay in this area. It's not that people, they could go in if they wanted to. But it's, we want to control the people going in and out, especially when there's alcohol involved. I mean, they could get in the business, I mean.
So they could have a gate on the backside and come from, say, somebody comes up to a dock and they want to come from the backside, they could do that.
They would have a gate, but we would, we recommend it's for emergency use only.
But again, but we don't do that with others. I guess that's, that's my only question, right? I mean, if there's a valid reason why we don't want that, I understand. But our idea of the river and the riverwalk is to be an inviting environment to the restaurants and bars downtown that are along there. And that's the idea, I think, of it. And if you limit that, then I guess I just don't understand that.
We have this situation at, like Buddy's East. They have a temporary pier. So there's a gate around there. They come in, they access it through the restaurant. It's, it's just a control means of access. You can walk off the riverwalk when it's extended, go into the business and go outside. It's just when you're serving alcohol, we want to have some type of control, even if it's not going to stop them, that it's there as a visual.
Okay, so somebody, what you're telling me, somebody could come up there and walk in?
They could.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Alderman Condon?
Well, I, obviously, I have also similar concerns about parking, which is not part of what we're discussing. But that's a, that's a general concern that I think everybody in the council is aware of and, you know, we are conscious of. You know, we just, we could make a parking spot, that would be great. But it's always something that we're keeping in mind whenever we make any approvals. But I agree. I mean, I think that our ultimate goal is to maintain or is to expand the potential of the riverwalk. And having this location as one other location that has outdoor seating and food, I think is a great addition to continue our vision of what the riverwalk can be. And I also agree that I think that if people want to come, they're going to park farther away. That, you know, if you, kind of like the saying, you build it, they will come. I do believe that if people want to go, they'll find a parking spot, they'll make the walk and utilize it. So, but eventually, I hope, we do have the whole riverwalk there and that side too.
Thank you. Alderman Santi?
On these, it's page three of the proposal, but page sixty-five, sixty-six, when you look it on our computer. On Q, it says the outdoor seating area is only permitted for business. The outdoor seating permit is issued, is open, but in no instance prior to seven o'clock in the morning after ten o'clock at night. So at ten o'clock at night, if karaoke is going on at this facility, is there outdoor, is there outdoor karaoke? Is there outdoor speakers or anything? And do they get shut down at that time? How does that work?
We put a condition on outdoor entertainment, including live musical entertainment. So we've written from seven PM to ten PM.
Okay, so any entertainment has to be indoors after ten o'clock in regards to live music or karaoke?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And the seating capacity is, I think, around thirty-five, forty? Is that what, is that what the estimate is?
I'm not positive. It would be dictated by the building code, depending on tables, chairs, the way, the permit, when they apply for that. That'll be addressed.
All right. And standard service regards to cocktails and food will be, will be allowed out there under those hours, correct? In regards, it'll be done at, I mean, can you serve anything after ten o'clock?
Yes, the entertainment, it just is cannot be past ten. The rest would be dictated by the liquor license.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Glab?
Yeah. I guess when we're talking about the use variance, you know, we've gotten into other points of everything. And I think more than anything else, it meets the criteria for the use variance. So I find it very difficult not to support it. However, which only brings up a very good point about parking. We have looked in the past as far as parking. I think we've kind of, with everything else that's going on, we've kind of neglected as far as really pushing, looking for other parking spots. One time we had looked at the building across from the park, that being an option or whatever. And I understand people are still going to park wherever it's closest, but sometimes and maybe we just need to start looking a little bit more into comprehensively that area as far as parking and how the city can help out with additional parking. I know we've done a little bit here and there with John Smith and everything else. But down the road, we need to readdress some of our comprehensive plans that we've had for certain subareas and see if we can strive forward. Parking has always been a problem in the neighborhood. And as, as some of these places are getting more popular, there's more and more problems with parking, you know.
And we did look at a couple of things we can do that are not very difficult as far as directional signage, because some people, you know, don't know where the municipal lot is behind there or that the parking's one block away. So there are some things we can do.
Right. But unfortunately, I mean, because parking's an issue, now, you know, that's kind of one of the biggest negatives about the whole thing. But in reality, the big question is, is whether to allow them to have the outdoor entertainment. And if they didn't have a parking lot out there and it was just an open, open field or whatever, I don't think anybody would have any kind of argument about that as far as the parking or whatever. It's just unfortunately that, yes, they will lose a couple of their parking spots. But, you know, they beat the zoning as far as parking and everything else because they're not not required to have that parking, right?
Correct.
So, I mean, if he wasn't coming in with this and he just wanted to take and build the shed out, wanted to close it off for parking, I mean, there's no way that we would be able to say, no, you can't do that. So, again, it's, it's one of these comprehensive problems that we need to look at is as far as parking and sometimes when somebody submits a proposal like that, that kind of wakes up our eyes that, hey, maybe we need to start looking at, at that area again and have plans on, you know, from the past years that, again, you can't do everything, but we need to look at, just make a game plan on it, that's all.
Further comments? Al Mousafer?
Um, just in looking at the plans too, the other concern that came up was the location of the, the garbage can location. It's A, right underneath the deck and B, right next to the patio. That to me doesn't sound like a very good customer location. Is there any other places that that can go?
It does have to be screened, you know, that doesn't block anything coming out of it, but, I mean, that's going to be an issue for the proprietor, you know, people sitting there, but it's not screened now. So, so we did require that.
Right, it's, no one's out there now though.
Right. Um, he's limited on, on where he could put it. And, 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 and also it's a function of how it gets emptied through the garbage truck coming up and taking it out, that type of thing.
So the garbage truck's going to have access then to that, to get in there somehow?
Yeah, he's going to have to pull in off of, off of Pearl from the front.
Okay. And then, this might be for you, Mr. Hobson, but do you recall that, is that property owner been open to the Riverwalk expanding behind that location? Because it's different from the petitioner, I believe, correct?
It is different, it is different, and they haven't been open to that.
Okay.
It's been, it's become funding between the city and for the Riverwalk Foundation. And the foundation has looked at adding that as their, as a next phase for them as well and looking into which way they go with that at this point, but they have been open to it.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I had.
Further questions? Al McLeod?
The only thing I was going to bring up is as far as the garbage dumpster and all that, I'm sure the health, health department's going to have a lot to say on that, it's concerned, food out there, where they can put it and how close and everything else and how it's going to be contained. And I'm sure this isn't a final site plan in iron, it's probably exactly in another, if they get approved tonight, then I'm sure they're going to have to come back with, get their permit and, and everything will be reviewed at that time, correct?
Correct, and we've had a lot of discussions on the layout, but the permit is still to come.
Right.
Okay.
Further comments? Seeing none, please call the law. Al Mousafer?
Yes.
Al Mousanti?
Yes.
Al McCondon?
Yes.
Al McLeod?
Yes.
Al McCurry?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a motion, motion to approve an ordinance granting the following for the property located at the northwest corner of Route 120 and Chapel Hill, excluding the Riverside Chocolate Factory property, as requested by the contract purchaser Bluestone Single Tenet Properties.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sorry.
I started to talk. The Appicott's requesting a conditional use permit to allow an automobile fueling station, drive-in establishment associated with an automobile car wash, a conditional use permit to allow a drive-in establishment as part of a freestanding multi-tenant retail building, a variance from the off-street parking loading requirements, a variance to allow multiple principal buildings and land uses on one zoning lot, the convenience store and the automobile washing facility, a variance from the minimum spacing requirement between serving, service stations, and a variance from the minimum parking street requirement, and any, any other variance is required to develop the property in substantial accordance with the site landscape plans and building elevations submitted for this petition, as well as preliminary plat of subdivision approval.
Thank you. Before I proceed with the motion, then I'm going to go back to the consent agenda and ask Mr. Hunter to please step forward, thirty-four, seven, I'm sorry, three, four, seven, four, zero, North Beere Coy. Mr. Hunter is the owner of the Riverside Chocolate Factory.
Mayor, thank you. My family's sitting over here, Diana, Gota, Taffeta and Bradley, my son-in-law, we represent the, the family, ownership of Riverside Chocolate Factory. We celebrated our thirtieth year, March fourteenth of this year. So we've got a few years with this city, grateful for this city, and I wanted to take the opportunity to thank all of you for all that you've done for us. That was one reason why I'm up here. The other reason was to thank Doug for all the work that he's done on our behalf and thank the mayor for the fourteen years that she's committed to this beautiful city and after our thirty years, we've had you blessed. The other reason why I'm up here and probably the main reason is Ricky Rockets, they're taking over our backyard. It's a big backyard and it's been there for a long time. And having gone through the Thornton ordeal, and many of you probably were familiar with that as well, we feel truly blessed this time around that we have a company such as Ricky Rockets. Ricky's a, a good man, he's, 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 he's got a lot of heart, he cares, he shares. I think he's going to be great for this city and I know he's going to assure our future as well. Just one important.
Thank you so much. Ricky, you signed in also, did you want to make a statement or just to answer questions?
Yeah, only if you have questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I'm looking for a motion on item number nine, Al Mousanti?
I will make a motion granting, the ordinance granting following for the property located at the northwest corner of Route 120 and Chapel Hill, excluding Riverside Chocolate Property, as requested by contracted purchaser Bluestone Single Tenet Properties as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Al Mousafer?
Second.
Discussion, Al Mousanti?
When I went, read through this and, and, and looked at the packet and kind of asked some questions, being out on, well, for most of my years being out on the road, I, I don't know if anyone else has, but I've stopped at the facility on one seventy, on seventy-two and, and the interstate, is that right? That's your place, right?
Very tenet hassle.
Very tenet hassle. Found a real nice convenience store, clean, got my car washed there, tenants were good. You know what, and I, and visually trying and recalling the facility because you, you're right next to a, a retail area, right? You know, small shopping.
Yeah, I actually own that too.
You do?
That's, that's part of the package.
Yeah.
So Dunkin' Donuts and Subway.
Subway and everything, yeah, so, and, and you put a nice facility in a much smaller piece of property.
Correct.
And now you're looking at expanding in regards to looking at the restaurant and, and also a full convenience store and then a restaurant.
So.
Can you brief me on the restaurant a little bit?
Could I ask you to step up to your question?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
You'll have to excuse me.
Nope.
Went to both Cubs games. I've had season tickets for thirty years and I'm pretty excited. That was the first one that I had built, and that's on one point seven six acres. So by building that one, I realized all the things that could be much better. And that's why every single one in the future are on between three and actually thirty acres, so that there are full Ricky Rockets Fuel Centers, which you can go there and get everything you need in one day. When I first opened that one up, it actually didn't have beer and wine, and within two years I went back to the city, talked with the mayor, talked with the whole council and was able to get beer, wine and, and liquor in the store. So if you make mistakes, you, or, or if you see you can enhance, that's why all of them are much larger. What my, my purpose is, is for you to be able to come, like you're saying, when you're traveling, and get everything you need almost for the whole day. You know, a lot of people would say, Rick, why did you put the Dunkin' Donuts and take the coffee away from your own store? But again, even for me as a customer, you know, I like Dunkin' Donuts coffee, it's got the drive-through, so I can, instead of going and pulling into a, a regular gas station, getting gas, pulling it out of there, driving, you know, a block or two blocks over to go to Dunkin' Donuts, I'm trying to get everything that you need for the day. So what we're doing is, is that store's about forty-two hundred square feet. The stores that we're building now are eight to ten thousand square feet, so there'll be a big, much larger presence inside the store so that it'll, that one is open and comfortable, but we're just trying to make them even nicer and bigger in a, a bigger selection of everything that you need, you know, when you come in.
Thank you. I have no, no other questions.
Al McLeod?
Yeah, I've been familiar with the facility for quite a few years and we've gone by it all the time. Needless to say, the, the architecture's a little different than the average gas station, so you always see that one and it sticks out and it sticks in your mind, which is a very good marketing tool. And yet it, it still blends in very nicely in the area. I mean, it's not an eyesore or anything else, so I could see where that would fit in very nicely. I really don't, you know, I was at the planning and zoning meeting, a lot of this stuff to discuss, and I'm not going to rehash a lot of it, but the one that I was interested in, and I had brought this up years back with the Thornton, Thornton, is the access to Riverside. Now, is there a formal agreement as far as cross easement access or whatever? I know in here it said that you would allow as customers to park there, but is there something in writing that basically, you know, has some kind of a cross easement to...
So we'd even, we, we do have that and also we've, we've provided them with a lot of additional parking that will help their business. I actually want them to flow together and I really like, I really think that we could help them a lot, do more business. I even actually want to do some advertising in the store and even let them, in, in some cases, especially on holidays and stuff, I'm going to have the reader boards and I'm welcome them to go on the reader boards. I mean, we want to be a draw for them and, and we would like for, 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 for them to be a draw for us. Good neighbors.
There is no formal agreement of any kind?
There, there is.
There is. I mean, in writing and all that.
And it would, it will be on the final plat, cross access perpetually for parking for Lot One, Lot Two and Riverside Chocolate Factory.
Okay. That's fine, because again, I, I don't want to rehash it from ten or twelve years or whenever it was we discussed it, but I can remember that when I was about two or three years old and we'd come in, that building was out there and it was south of the cornfield at the time because at that time, one twenty was a little bit further south than, you know, it moved and everything else. It's kind of an historic landmark for the city of McHenry and I just, you know, with the expansion and the widening of one twenty the last time, I just kind of wondered, you know, what happens the next time around because you guys are so close to the road as it is. And I want you guys to, you know, I want that building to, to be vibrant, that's why I was concerned about.
Thank you.
Can I address, can I just, is it okay? We were blessed because Ron Mikowski, who owns all the property behind us, has been very kind to us and gave us, had a very reasonable rent. Parking that there or we wouldn't be around today. We just don't have any parking because what we lost with the one twenty expansion. And Ricky has picked up, he's picked up that baton and now, now are we not only going to have adequate parking, but it's going to be paved and, and bridged. And the old pine tree tower is going to stand forever.
We're not going to raise prices, right?
You get your coupon at the gas station to go over there.
Anything else? Al Mousafer?
I, I've been very happy with this, the, the information that we got is, looks good and, and everything has been very positive. It seems like it's one of those things where everything that I tried to look at to, or talked with people about has been thoroughly addressed. And I, I think this is, you know, we've talked about it in years past, probably about eight years ago, I think, but this is again our, our, you know, a great access point to the city of McHenry and it's right there on our, our border and it's going to provide for future development out there in, in, in a classy situation too, for other people to, to utilize it when you get your existing neighbors to buy in as much as they have. It's, it makes this a pretty simple thing to go forward with. The, the couple of questions that I had that I just wanted to, to make sure, the truck parking's not going to be overnight, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And there's nothing, there's not on the site like, like laundry or showers or things like that for truck?
No, no, there's not. And we, we, we talked about putting up a sign that was going to say two hours or something.
Yeah, I think we're, that's in the ordinance already, isn't it, or plans to be done?
It's three hours of conditioning.
Like question.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
The, you know, the, the getting in and out, I think is, is, again, looking at that, that's always been some issues on some of the major highways, but I think the way that, that this is designed, the only thing that I would be concerned about is the one issue that came up at the, in the planning and zoning, and that is with possible U-turns on Country Lane behind to the north, and we could probably work on that with some type of signage or something to that effect.
The Appicott, so that's under McKenney County Highway and the Appicott is already at, working with McDot to, to get a sign erected that says no U-turns on Country Lane specifically for that reason. So it, it's been a, a good relationship between IDOT, McDot, city, engineers and all that, so we have a lot to go to work out, but yes.
Okay. That's all I had for this item. Thanks.
Al McCurry?
Yeah, I think it's going to be a great addition and like Al Mousafer said, it could foster more development. The only, and it, and this is the, you know, again, I'll just echo, the, the information presented is top-notch, you can just, you can really tell what it's going to look like and, and what you're doing. I too would have concerns off of one twenty, but it's far enough back from the, the intersection and you get the left turn, I, you know, I think that's going to be an issue. The one concern I have, and I know it's, it's listed in here as kind of a remote possibility, but these land banked parking up on those two lots, which are really right beside residential area, I know it says it's not likely that's going to be needed, I guess the question would be, it could still happen at some point in the future, what would that parking be for, assuming it was needed? Would that be like employee parking?
Employee parking.
So it would just be whenever employee came down. It's not a, not a high volume situation. Okay, thank you.
Al McCondon?
Well, first of all, I was fine until the presentation about Riverside Chocolate Factory. Now all I can think of is chocolate covered strawberries. They're the best. No, I, I am really excited to have this proposal move forward. I think it will be a great gateway into McHenry and certainly Riverside Chocolate Factory is certainly a destination spot because there, there are things out there and this will add to it and, and I think, I love the concept of the inclusivity of having the ability to get a bunch of things done. Unfortunately, you're not on my side of town, but for people that are on that side of town.
We're going to need you to come over.
Okay, well, I do go over there, so, but I, yeah, I think, I think it is very well thought out and I appreciate all the information that has been included, the work with our staff, especially Doug Martin and, and everyone and the cooperation has, has given us a great proposal to look at and, and really be able to vision, so, or visualize, so, best of luck.
Before I go, I'd just like to add one comment. I echo what you say, Al McCondon, it, this, this project has just been a pleasure. It, it... It has been so professionally thought out and gone so smoothly and so well. Thanks to your interest in one of our old businesses while you're bringing a new business. I think that that really speaks volumes to what we try to accomplish as a city, and I just want to say thank you. It's been such a great process, so we really appreciate that.
Thank you. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Alden Santi, did you have a comment?
No, I'm fine. I was confusing the two motions, so, no, I'm fine.
Any other comment on this motion? Alden McGlaughlin?
All I was going to ask was, is the double lot back there that, I guess, I don't remember if it was Alden Curry or whoever it was that brought it up, that zoned commercial already, correct?
Yeah, C5.
So I mean, all those issues were probably brought up a billion years ago when the property was annexed, you know, as far as whether it's, what it's being used for. And if it's C5, it can be used for a lot of different things. And I think parking is probably one of the less impactful uses than some of the other things, so just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Alden Santi?
Yes.
Alden Shaffer?
Yes.
Alden Condon?
Yes.
Alden McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Alden McCurry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. The next item is a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a development and economic incentive agreement between the city of McHenry and Bluestone Single-Tenant Properties LLC. I'm going to defer to our attorney right now, and he'll explain one.
Yeah, before you make a motion, and I'll take responsibility for this, as I'll explain, so the date of the agreement you're looking at is on the upper right-hand corner, is October 12th. On October 17th, we received a new draft, and there's a couple of sets of changes that I'll explain here in a minute. But the problem was, this was submitted to Doug two weeks ago. I was gone for a week, and so by the time I got back, we got onto it Monday. They responded very quickly to the edits that I arranged with Doug, but, so everything had been pretty quick, and it really wasn't their fault at all, it was just because I was gone. So it resulted in a final draft of October 17th, and there's only two issues that were dealt with, and I can go through these line by line, but they're really pretty simple. First of all, in your draft that you're looking at, there was an annual payment to be made every December 31st in paragraph six. That's when the sales tax incentive would be paid. They would prefer to have it three times a year, so that edit was made, they're going to be made in March, July, and November of each year, as opposed to once a year. The second issue that was clarified really is in the liquor license section number 11. I indicated in the agreement that the city will issue three liquor licenses on the subject property. We didn't know the classes yet, so that was not articulated, but they clarified it by saying that those three liquor licenses will make available for use by the convenience store, restaurants, and then the gaming cafe located on the subject property. Otherwise, the agreement's the same. So if you can trust me in making those edits, because I won't change them, they're mine, is we'd be motion to approve the execution of the development agreement subject to changes approved by the development, city attorney.
Thank you. Looking for that motion? Alden Shaffer?
I'll make the motion for this development agreement as presented with the changes that Attorney McArdle discussed.
Thank you. Second, Alden Santi?
Yes, I will second the motion.
Thank you. Discussion, Alden Shaffer?
No, again, this is, again, when you talk about the east side and west side of town along 120, this is, those were areas of concern for development, and this is the kind of things we want to see go in, and I don't have an issue with this at all.
Thank you. Alden McCurry?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Do we have, is there any way to estimate, or do we know, I mean, when we talk about a sales tax incentive, we assume that it's new business, new taxes, but that's not necessarily the case if you're taking business away from an existing McHenry business. Is there any way or any estimate or any diligence is done on that as far as how, what percentage of this sales would come out of existing businesses?
No, I didn't do that.
Because, I mean, it wouldn't be the total number, I mean, we know that on these...
I mean, we could look at year to year, but no, nothing specifically.
I mean, it just seems like that's something we ought to try to do in the future on these types of agreements. At least some, I know it's a guess, but, you know, how much should be taken? Now, this one, I guess my opinion is, it's probably not a lot because of where it's located, so it's probably not affecting much that exists currently in the city. Might affect that station across the street from it. A lot, but...
And I would agree, most of it is fuel, so I don't think there's a lot taken away from, we don't have any stations here.
Okay. And then the question on the agreement itself, it's a general question on agreements, and I made my note, given the dismal position of the state of Illinois. In the package, it's item 12 in the agreement where it talks about incentives being paid on sales taxes the city receives from the state. So let's assume for the moment, with the condition of Springfield, at some point in the future, they say, "Well, we're not going to share as much as what we've always done with municipalities." Is it only based on what taxes we then receive, not just the revenues themselves?
Yes, we do that on purpose, and we do that with TIP, too, because we don't want that to happen, so it's specifically from the property.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Alden Condon?
Just, I think this is part of doing business. We've talked in the development meeting about different ways that we can have incentives, especially for larger projects like this, to move forward, and we need to be competitive and be able to have some incentives. So I think this is exactly what the intent of this is, and a great example to be able to provide.
Thank you. Any further comments? Alden Santi?
Yeah. Under three liquor licenses, so they go as package, we don't know exactly what type they are, I mean, are they A? We don't know yet, okay. One is one will be packaged, but we know that, because that's convenience store.
Yes.
Do we know, or how many terminals, video gaming terminals, you are requesting, or are you able to install there?
So the maximum in each location is five, that's the law right now. That would be the max.
With, I know it's different, and help me out here, but with the truck stop definition, it's available there, too?
It's five. They've talked about raising it to 10. You'd have to be within three miles of a interstate exchange.
And do you plan on installing 555 immediately when you're up and running?
As each business opens, yes.
You'll have those open?
Yes.
Okay, as soon as day one is possible. And you're also, you're doing that in Rolling Metals right now, correct? Or no, I'm sorry, you're not?
In Hoffman Estate, it doesn't meet the requirement to be a truck stop, too. You have to have separate diesel pumps, you have to have a minimum of three acres. There is a gaming cafe in that little side building. Again, it's only 120.76 acres, and there's four tenants in that side building, and there is one gaming cafe.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, my concern is that, you know, the gaming cafe is attached or next to the restaurant, which is then again, next to the service station, which when you look at it as a whole, I'm definitely comfortable with it, but gaming on its own, I, those types, those styles are just not, I'm just not very comfortable with. But that being said, I look forward to having you up. I guess that's my final question. How quickly is something like this going to be constructed?
I'm really versed in the gaming business, and there are actually three different customers. You have a gaming cafe, if you have like a pizza place with a bar area, or, and then you have the fuel center, they really end up being three different types of customers.
And my final question is, I mean, it's an estimate, but, you know, how soon, how long will the construction take, something like this?
Well, once we get our permits, it shouldn't take us more than nine, 12 months at most, but I would estimate nine months.
Yeah, so we should, we anticipate having IDOT next summer, so that I would say nine months from the time we're issued a permit from IDOT.
All right. Thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank you. Alden McGlaughlin?
So that means nine months, and then a year from now, you'll be back at the council and say, "You now want to..." You know, we have two sides of the river, you want to be all the way on the west side of town, too.
It's a separate market.
And Riverside says, "Yeah, they'll put a second one on."
Now, the daughter doesn't want to work that hard.
I just tend to wonder, though, you know, I see they have no recapture on this, they're signing off as far as the recapture. So basically, if somebody else wants to hook up, they just pay the regular hookup fees for the city? There is no additional charges?
Correct. There are businesses that are hooked up to private water in the city. We've had some issues in the past. They wouldn't be able to do that, they'd have to connect physically, yes, but no, there's no recapture.
Okay, and those hookup fees go to?
They go to, I mean, they're all...
They go to the sewer water fuses.
Correct.
Right. Okay. And I have no other questions.
Any other questions? Seeing none, please call the roll. Alden Shaffer?
Yes.
Alden Santi?
Yes.
Alden McCurry?
Yes.
Alden Condon?
Yes.
Alden McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Welcome to McHenry.
Thank you. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a discussion regarding Chapter Nine, Devices Coin Operated Sections Nine and Ten of Video Gaming Terminals of McHenry and Mississauga. The reason there's no supplement to this item is, it was my request to place this on the agenda. We've had, you know, some consternation about how to proceed with this, and I explained to you the last time, and our attorney wasn't here, but I have not tried to prohibit you from discussing this. I have tried to do it in the fashion that I've been instructed to do it by our attorney. It went to committee, there was no recommendation coming out of committee, so I'm putting it on the agenda tonight because we need direction. We don't know what it is you want us to prepare, or what your concerns are, or what... To bring an item forward to council, this is the same as a committee in a whole meeting, to bring the item forward to council, we need some direction on what it is you're looking for, and if there is consensus, to bring that forward. So at this time, I would just like to open it up to whomever would like to leave the discussion, to talk about what your concerns are. Alden Shaffer?
First of all, I want to thank you for doing that, because I was one of the ones greatly concerned about it, and I was a little unhappy that nothing came out of the committee after all the discussion I was there. But the things, there's three major things that I wanted to look at and discuss with Attorney McArdle, and that is the fee structure that we currently have and changing it going forward, including existing locations and then new locations. Do you want to address each one separately, or you want me to go through the three that I had? How do you want me to do that? Keep talking?
Are you asking me or...
I'm asking it.
Keep talking.
And then the second one is kind of twofold, and that is the cafe-style locations versus the true spirit of the bar, restaurant-type locations, and possibly looking at a square-footage limitation or a food service limitation on that. Those were three things that I had as concerns.
Does anyone else? Alden McCurry?
Well, hey, those, Chuck in the office, and Alden Shaffer's mentioning them, and another, I mentioned square footage, and I know that there's other places that have looked at that. And I've mentioned this before, but it would also, and I don't know whether you can do this or not, but, you know, as an alternative to that, that we would look at where revenue comes from. So, you know, and again, I don't know what the numbers would be, if you look at a business that is solely, you know, eighty, ninety percent dependent on the, like the video cafe-type thing, versus what I would say is a viable business on its own, like a restaurant, like the Spar, for example, in town, where it's a truly, you know, truly a business hole on its own, and it happens to have video gaming. And again, I don't know if that's a viable way to look at it, but it's just one that I think ought to be at least explored and can be looked at based on revenue, based on square footage, as Alden Shaffer said. I too had fees written down. And the last one I had written down was, and I've had, this is interesting, because this is the only one I've actually ever gotten comments on from other people, is signage. And I know some municipalities have looked at signage as far as visibility from outside and so forth, so that would be another area that we should at least look at.
Thank you. Alden Condon?
A couple of things, I just want to point out that at that committee meeting, several times, I asked for any direction that any alderman, and there were six out of seven of us there, although only three are on the committee, to give to staff to explore. The whole point of having that at the committee level was to have a discussion and bring about some concerns, which certainly were presented. Staff didn't, when the original proposal for video gaming came forth, staff had done their due diligence in providing us that information. I'm a firm believer that anytime we put a new proposal forward that, you know, you see how it works, then you probably have to come back and tweak it a little bit. I mean, that's just pretty common. But there was nothing, there was no recommendation from any of the aldermen as part of the committee who said to direct staff to do something specific or explore something specific. The concerns, and I will say that I agree with some of the things that have been said. The fees, I think we certainly can, I'd be open to having a review of what other committees do, and certainly think that we can raise our fees. Signage, I know a couple of the times when we've had proposals, you know, I've asked, you know, are the machines themselves going to not be right in front so that they're visible? My preference is always that they're back farther, that they're not visible, and so as far as additional, having signage, I would be open to seeing what we can come up with. I think all of us, the two things that I think that can be lumped together with what Alden Shaffer and Alden McCurry brought forth, getting at the root of, is it a true gaming, video gaming establishment, or is it, that's just a component of their larger function? And because of the way the state has put it forward with a licenser, with the license of the gaming being connected with the liquor license, and we don't want to, I don't want to prevent a viable functioning restaurant coming in, so, you know, one option was we thought about zoning. Well, if you do that, then we're really limiting ourselves to a potentially quality business coming in. I too don't want our whole community to be full of video gaming. I've said it before, it's not something I even have any interest in, but there are people out there that do enjoy it, and I think it's okay that we have it in places that can operate functionally. I think with tonight, I think this would be our fifth solely... I think, I think with tonight, I think this would be our fifth solely video gaming facility. So there's not, it's not rampant, but you know what, my preference would be that five's a good number. But how do we regulate it? Because typically it's, it's, you know, we have the ability to say no. So we can take a look at, okay, the square footage is very small. Do we ask the question, I don't know if it's even legal, can we ask the question? What is the intent of your revenue coming from solely, you know, what, what's the greatest amount of your revenue coming from? So I, I mean, I think there are ways that we can explore. But, but I also want to keep in mind and state that we do always have that option of saying no through our ability to control the liquor license. So, but, but nothing came forward, I guess the bottom line is too, nothing came forward specifically to direct staff to look at, to review and to bring back. And, and it's frustrating and I wish that would have happened at that committee meeting because I think some of this could have been avoided, but we're here now, so.
Other comments? Alden McGladd?
Yeah, well, I remember when we first discussed video gaming in the first place. In fact, we had several businesses out there that were lobbying for us to have it. Some of the businesses stated how they needed the additional revenue with the downturn in the economy and everything else. And I think the intent that the council had at the time was to help out our existing businesses. I believe, if I recall, I did not support it because of the statement that the attorney had made and that's the fact that we approved it, state basically, the only, the only regulations or the only thing that we regulated with is the liquor license and that's it. Now, I've seen other towns doing it, of course, none of them have challenged legally whether or not they can do it or not, but it does bring up the question. I do have concerns as far as the looks of the, the city if we start winding up with these gaming places again. And, and that's some, that's all basically that most of their revenue, I believe, is, is just basically the gaming and they could not exist without it. You know, if, if they were bringing a type of business that a percentage of our constituents wanted other than gambling, such as, you know, maybe they couldn't make a go of the type of restaurant that they would be opening up. But the video gaming brings in enough revenue for them to make, make a go of it. The good restaurant brings in, you know, the gamblers or whatever. I mean, I hear constantly from, constantly from seniors in this town, the fact that they don't want the chain type restaurants. I mean, a lot of them don't want just Chili's and Applebee's and restaurants like that. They want the mom and pop type restaurant, you know. Kind of the around the clock type menus is what they're looking for. They don't want, you know, you can either have a hamburger or a hot dog or pot roast with your gambling, you know. And those are the type of establishments, you know, that you'd like to see coming in. But it's gotten to the point to where you start worrying that if gaming ever fell through, then all of a sudden you got a lot of empty buildings again. You know, because you know all these gaming places are all gonna start closing right away. I mean, you know, within a year's time probably because of the fact that they have no revenue coming in. Because they can't exist without it at all, you know. And I think that was one of the main things, and I think we needed this discussion because we needed to see where the whole council stands as far as what they feel. I mean, it's, it's like anything else that too much of a good thing is, is no good either, you know. In other words, yes, gaming brings in extra revenue for us, but what is our main goal for bringing in commercial businesses into our town? You know, to open up the commercial strips. I, I've always felt that our, our, the main goal for bringing that in is to service our constituents here in the city of what they want. So they don't have to go down to Crystal Lake to shop, you know, because of the fact that they've got a bigger selection of stores there or whatever. That's what we need. We need, we, you know, and I've always said about the downtown area, we need stores that complement each other so that it's not a one stop shop. You know, you don't go downtown just to stop at one store, that you've got three or four or five locations you might go to. And the whole, the whole city as far as commercial should be set up that way. And I just feel these type of places kind of take away from those small, small shops that maybe the small time entrepreneurs could start moving into. You know, and I think the trend I've been seeing is, is people want service. The bigger stores are trying to give it to them, but they can't. Not, not the type of service that they want. They want that personal interaction between the two people. And sometimes people are willing to pay a little bit more to get that. And that's what I think is going to break back a lot of these small businesses, you know. How many times you, you, you see people in their ads and, and their sayings that, you know, it's the small businesses that made America. It's, you know, it had, and you had, you know, a big company like Sears at one time that grew so astronomically large and they came crumbling down. Kmart was the one that, that was after them and, and then they came crumbling down. Now Walmart's there. But you know what? These small guys, and I'll give the New York bits for, for instance, granted, they, they went into a bigger building, but for years, for years and for years, they sustained being in McHenry. Why? Because they gave that personal attention. And we just need a good mix in the, in the town and if we have too many video gaming places, we're kind of breaking, we're starting to label ourselves too much to, oh, well, if you go to McHenry, you got this, this and this. You got the McHenry, hey, you know, you got a variety of different places to go, different things to see. You got the Riverwalk, you've got the, the outdoor entertainment places out there and then you've got shops here and there and everywhere else to go to town. That's what you want, that's what you want people to envision when they come to McHenry, that what McHenry's about. So, again, and it's a long-term process, it's, it's things that we need to do that, you know, needless to say, we need people that are willing to invest in our community, such as that gentleman right there, you know, that will create a lot of the excitement and the, the different types of businesses that we can have in our town. And I just think video gaming, and I'm not, I'm not against gambling and I'm not against video gaming. It's just, you know, let's set a parameter as far as what we have coming into our town and, you know, I don't know. I guess that's a challenge to our city attorney, to what we can restrict, what we can't. And I'd like to see staff bring back for another discussion, maybe in a couple of months, as far as what other towns in the county are doing or even in the outline counties. And then also give it to the attorney to look at so that the attorney can advise us one way or the other whether or not, you know, we're, how would you put it, home free as far as being able to do this without any contentions of possible liability down the road.
Thank you. Alden Santi?
Yeah, I was, I'm part of that committee and I was disappointed in that meeting because originally when it started, we had no legal representation there. And I was disappointed because this is all about, you know, the legal environment in regards to this, the whole video gaming concept under the state of Illinois. That's what it's all about. And, and I put up, I mean, a lot of the stuff, I'm repeating myself, but a lot of those brought up tonight that I can only come up with ideas and thoughts about what I feel maybe we should be looking into. I'm not going to say every single thing should be looked into, but I, I think there's been some good things that have been brought up, not just tonight, but before in regards to square footage, does it, does the establishment have a, a real menu with it, you know? Can we look at what Alden Schaefer, Schaefer brought up in regards to permit fees? And, you know, can we, you know, can we up those, can we up those fees on an annual basis? And, and actually, no offense to, to the people here tonight, but, you know, can we look at it to when, when the new ones come in? You know, you know, can we start them off at, at, at a higher fee? And gradually bring the other ones to that, to that same level that have been in our town and have invested in our town from right here. Yeah, I, I, I mean, I see other communities doing things like this. I, I see, I hear about a square footage in, in another community and then there's also another community, I mean, bringing up Huntley has got a moratorium on, on, on video gaming and liquor licenses. And I, I mean, I would appreciate just one phone call, just to call them and say, hey, what's your thought pattern there? Because you're, you've got this moratorium, what's, what are you thinking about? What are your ideas? I mean, I assume there's, there's some reason for that moratorium. Maybe it's useless, but I'd like to make that phone call. Or like to have somebody make that phone call. And, and I guess the only other question I have is just kind of going back in history. Originally, when we first did video gaming, it went through committee? Did it, did it go, and, and it went through, was it, did it go through finance committee originally, first time around? It does?
I have the memo.
For the fees.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I have.
I'm going to add some thoughts and then I'm going to let Attorney McArdle, at his suggestion, he'd like to address some of this at this time, but then he'd like the opportunity to present something, explore some things and present that to us. He's not going to be able to answer everything tonight. These are my thoughts only, a couple of, of thoughts that I have. First of all, you know, the state is the one that made it legal for businesses to have gaming, as you all know. So that, that part of the equation was taken out of our hands. We had to decide if we would allow it in our municipality or not and we decided that we weren't. I, I understand what you're all saying, but I, I guess I'm, I'm looking at it in the be careful what you wish for vein. Because if we had moratoriums or if we limited space, a business like Ricky Rocket's wouldn't be sitting here tonight wanting to come to, may not be sitting here wanting to come to our town when they can drive five miles down the road and go to somebody else's town who's going to say, yeah, we want that. So we, one thing that I want to say is you always have the right to deny. And every, every time one of these comes forward, it's in your hands to deny it. Sometimes it's as easy as denying it because there's not enough parking. We, we've approved variances. You have to approve the liquor licenses, so it's not like we don't have control. We do. It's a difficult call to make, I get that. I, I know it's hard to look someone in the face and say, no, I don't want your business here. But when I look like a, look at a potential development like Ricky Rocket's, I, all I'm saying is we want to be careful not to tie our own hands. You have the power already, that's my personal opinion. Why we would want to limit potential business opportunities when we, when we already have a way to, to reject something we don't want is, is it hard for me to understand? When, when I look at what has happened to our town since video gaming, two things come to mind. We've had zero police calls based on video gaming, zero. We have had many establishments reinvest that money to make their places of business more appealing, more attractive. I know all of you go to many of them. I see you there and, and they've, they've reinvested in their own environment and used that money on things, new tables, new lighting, new, new things inside that they wouldn't have done were it not for that additional income from video gaming. So, so that's the upside of it to me is that there is a reinvestment. I do believe that there is. You know, you talk about having empty buildings if the, if the craze or whatever you want to call it, if, if, if the cafe type businesses die away. We would have empty businesses, empty buildings now possibly if we had a lot of those uses. But that's always our call. It's always up to us to decide if we, we want that business or we don't want that business. Excuse me. One thing I would add too is, I'm not a gamer myself, but I have many, many female friends who are, who are retired, who have that little bit of disposable income and that's what they enjoy doing. They prefer the cafes. They don't want to go sit in a bar with a group of women. They like to go to the Stella's or Betty's or, or those kinds of places. So there's different customers for different kinds of businesses. You know, you might be a jewel shopper or you might be a Meyer shopper and there's a reason why you pick which one. So, so I don't think it, I don't think it's a good idea to just blanketly say, we don't want this particular kind of business. I, I think that you have the opportunity and tools at your disposal to deny what you don't want and to approve what you do want. And, and tonight was just a perfect example to me with Ricky Rocket's. We, we just approved three opportunities because of the greater good that this project is going to bring to our community. I mean, it, it's a, they're making a huge investment in us and, and we're making an investment back in them. It was a great partnership. Were it not for our video gaming ordinance being the way it was, I don't know, they might not have even looked at that property. Because we have the reputation, it's, and, and it's a good reputation. I think we have a reputation of being business friendly and, and our staff does just a remarkable job of working with people. So while I think there, there are ways that we can control things, we don't want to tie our own hands. That's, that's what I want to be careful of. We don't want to make it difficult to do business in our town. We have the power. We, you, you were elected to represent your constituents and decide, yes, I want this here or no, I don't, or we don't. You know, and you all do a great job of talking to the people you represent. As far as the, the fee, the, the city fee goes, I, I agree with that. I would bet we're going to find out we're probably the lowest, if not one of the lowest in the county. And I definitely think that's something that should be looked at through the budget process and through, through the finance committee. Those are just my feelings on, on gaming as a whole and what it has brought to our community. So I'm going to let David address what he wants to or feels comfortable with addressing tonight and then I'll see what you want to do after that.
Okay, so the mayor said three times the main point here, which is what the point I was going to make and I'll make it for the fourth time, I guess. You're asking us to come up with regulations from a staff standpoint that seem to permit gaming in certain areas and not permit it in some area, some other areas based on revenue, square footage and those other issues you, you touched upon, maybe some signage things. But each time you do that, you're exposing yourself to liability from a chip, for a challenge from the permittee or the applicant for not being allowed to do so under an unlawful ordinance. I don't know why you would do that when you can just say no in your discretion each time it comes before you, or you can say yes on any basis you want. You don't have to explain it. You can just say, I don't want to issue that liquor license, period. And you should be good. That's much cleaner than trying to skirt around Homer Rule, hide behind Homer Rule and enact those type of regulations. I, having said that, I think the fee structure's open, of course. We've seen that already, that's already gone to the courts. So we can explain that to you again. It's already been disclosed to you when we first considered video gaming, but we can recycle that and make sure we're up on the law as far as that's concerned. Crystal Lake's signage ordinance is interesting because, you know, Crystal Lake had their thumb on all these people until the bitter end. And then they opened it up and they don't allow signage for anybody. So nobody incurred the cost of, of constructing a sign. In this town, you have people who have vested rights. They've made investments in their building that rely on, let's use signage as the example, that rely on signage. So to enact a regulation to say, no more signage in the window. So, to enact a regulation to say, no more signage in windows, the way Crystal Lake did, would be risky because of the vested rights that someone invested relying on the ordinance that said, you didn't have to worry about your signage. And now you're changing midstream, so you're going to have to amortize that regulation and say, well, for, for new businesses, no signage, and you probably might be good there, Crystal Lake ordinance is good. And for you people who have existing signs, you can continue to use those, depends on how you want to amortize it. If it's an expensive sign, maybe five years, if it's not so expensive, maybe two years. I don't know how you're going to do that. But you'd have to allow some sort of depreciation of that cost in order to justify that vested right elimination. So, signage can present some problems for the existing signs. Whether that's permitted under the law of home rule, I don't know. But again, you're, you're, you're regulating something that's, really, it's very difficult to predict. Crystal Lake's out there now, now they still have leverage over their, their, their patrons or their, their users because they've only allowed three machines. So, if their users start fighting back on some of the regulations, they'll never see five. But if they work with them, the politics could change, the, the group could change, and they may see five someday. So, they're not going to challenge anything. They have them, right where they want them. So, I'm not sure Crystal Lake's a good example to look to. We might want to go look at other towns, the Naperville's, the Schaumburg's and things like that, and see what kind of movement they're, they're making on some of these regulations. But my guess is you're not going to see a lot and that they're going to regulate it based on the liquor license. So, with that, we, if you continue the way you are tonight, we'll go to the other towns. We'll see what they're doing because it's the easiest route rather than inventing the new wheel, the same wheel. And then, there's no point in a moratorium. A moratorium is just a temporary ban that announces to the public, just sit tight, we're thinking about it. And I'm not sure what that means, actually. It's basically saying they're not going to prove anything. And then we'll bring that back to you. I don't think it'll take very long. I don't think the analysis is that difficult.
Questions, Paulman Curry?
Yeah, and I appreciate everything both of you have brought up. And I, I guess I, I hear, I hear what you say about the, it's cleaner to do it, to what we've been doing. And, and I, I agree with that, it is cleaner. Either you say yes or you say no. And I guess what, I guess from my standpoint, what I was looking for maybe was some way to limit the establishment rather than, to me, it's, it's out of my own sense of fairness. Like, I say, this business, no, no liquor license, so you can't come here. And I say, this business, which might be the very same type of thing, and we say yes to. To me, that's a, to me, that's a fairness issue. So, I guess what I was kind of grasping at with some of these thoughts with the square footage and things that we've seen, is there some way to limit those establishments short of saying an absolute no? I mean, we've done both now, we've said no to one of them, but I, I mean, you mentioned that we, we open ourselves up.
Right, but do it from a liquor standpoint. So, in your liquor licenses, just say that no liquor establishment can have less than twelve hundred square feet. Make it simple. Why not? Well, you know, make it, make it a liquor type of regulation, and then I think you're good. Because they have to get a liquor license. If they, once they get a liquor license, anything you do beyond that regulating gaming is risky. And we know that's the case.
So, you're saying use the liquor license, say with this, just, just throwing it out, not saying what you miss, but with the square footage, I mean, you can throw it in the liquor license itself.
Yeah.
That way, because I know in the past, it's been said to me that some people want me to deny the liquor, or not recommend the liquor license because it's going to be for a gaming cafe or whatever. And as liquor commissioner, I just don't feel comfortable doing that. That's discrimination if I'm picking and choosing, there's, I have a set of rules to follow too. And if, if someone meets all those criteria, they've been fingerprinted, they, they do everything that our liquor control ordinance says they're supposed to do, I have to recommend that they get a liquor license. You know, so, so I think that's, that is a, a good idea.
Well, they were struggling with the same issue. There's a nice struggle when it comes to us for that. I struggle with, why do I say no to you and I say yes to, to you?
Right.
Yeah, I thi, I was just going to say that, that it's, it's very difficult to deny a liquor license here when it's an establishment or a plan that fits all our criteria except maybe, you know, location or parking or something like that. So, that's the first time I've heard of, like, reviewing our liquor license classes to maybe have something tied into it. That, that to me does make sense. I thought more along the lines of you have the, the right of refusal during that, you know, but they've met all of our liquor license things, so you're refusing. I, I mean, if you're talking about opening yourself up to litigation, I think that would be
I agree.
More than having, something has to be in the, in, in the license class itself or in.
But your, your discretion with issuing a license, you prob, you may be correct at least the way you want to operate. But remember, you're also exercising your discretion to increase the number of liquor licenses.
You have the power.
That's where it's all, it's happening. We're not going to increase it in this particular case. And I get the, you know, why not this one, yet you do it over here. But, but the, the real discretion you have is whether to increase the number of liquor licenses within the city.
And you know, I, I understand that that's, that's difficult sometimes. It's hard to make those calls sometimes, but the way I feel about it is that's what we've been elected to do. It's, you know, we're trying to figure this out so that it's fair and equitable, equitable to whomever wants to come and do business in our town. And I get what you're saying. I just don't think the way to do it is to, to, for the liquor commissioner to say,
I agree.
You don't, you don't get to apply for a liquor license.
I, I do know that, again, other municipalities have a, a number set, correct, on different license classes? Ours has always been
It's been open.
Open.
There again, I'll just caution you, okay, so, so now Ricky Rockets comes to McHenry and they say, we, we want to do this development, we're going to need three liquor licenses. And, and I say, well, only, I only have one available. We have to go to the council and ask them if they'll amend it. You know, you make it a little more complicated by, by having a set number. And I've talked to many mayors who agree with me on that. It, it, it makes it more difficult for people to do business in your town if every time you need to do something, well, the way we do it, if somebody goes out of business, we, we lower the number. If they had to come and say, okay, I, I want to have a convenience store, I want to have a gaming cafe, and I want to have a restaurant, and we only have a license available for the, the convenience store, we only have the other two, then you run the risk, are they going to stick with us and chime through all those hoops? Or are they going to drive to the next town and say, what do you, what can you give me? You know? So, that's, and that's my only caution, is that we be careful what we wish for.
Right. Luckily, we, you know, I guess luckily, we don't get major developments like that all the time.
It's not luckily.
I mean, I mean, from a standpoint of us voting on it, it's, it's, it's been a more of a onesie type thing.
Right, right. And it's a
And I think that's where the questioning has come up, so.
So, so is it fair then for David to take the information? Oh, I'll, kind of, before we get to that, I, a couple of questions. I know because of the attachment between the liquor license and the gaming, you know, we, we've been, you can't, a business can come into us and say they want a liquor license. They don't have to tell us if they're going to put video gaming in there. And that's where I think some of us have struggled because they can just, they can do that whenever because it's attached. So, is it even legal to ask their, the intent of where they expect the revenue to come from? Is that even a question?
If they want a liquor license, yes, they have to answer your questions. If they don't answer them, then you say no.
Okay. So, so I guess what I'm getting at is we don't have to necessarily, from what I hear you saying, I don't think we should, but we could have that part of the application process to be able to get a better read on whether it's going to be
And we do know, we ask, I mean, we know, what I mean.
But they don't have to tell us.
No, but I, I've not had the experience that people weren't forthcoming, they, they tell you what they're going to do.
Okay. But the other thing that I just doubles as, as, and I guess I wanted to throw out there, if we do say that we will only off, offer liquor license with the square footage, then that would prohibit us potentially from an establishment like this that was coming in with a larger proposal that just wanted video gaming in a part of their development, correct?
They need a variance.
They need a variance, okay, so there's ways around that as well, okay.
These are laws you're creating, so you can always change them. And home rule helps. If you were not home rule, we'd be having a lot more discussion about whether we could do some of this.
Sure.
Thank you, Paulman Schaefer.
Exactly, we can always change it. And, and one of the points I was just thinking about is that, you know, I don't know if we have the perfect video gaming ordinance. I mean, I was just looking for better guidelines. If it goes down the liquor license avenue, so be it. I, I just, I just know there's other options out there, and I don't know if they're good or if they're bad. I mean, you know, Ricky comes in, I mean, no offense, guys, but you're here tonight. They come in and they have this great opportunity, and yeah, they've, they've got gaming coming in. But you know what, there's a lot of other elements to that, that, that whole scenario there. They've got, you know, they've got a state highway of four lanes right in front of them. And, and, and they've got, you know, as I could tell tonight, their neighbors are, are very happy to have them as their new neighbors. And, you know, there, there's a lot of elements to what they're doing. I assume the gaming is one of them. But I don't know how much it measured on their final decision with us in regards to, was that number three, or was that number thirteen, or where was it on their decision-making process? I don't know that. And, you know, that's something that, you know, that'll be measured when something, when, when a business comes into town, a new business, and they're looking for that. I mean, the scenario has to be right, the square footage has to be there, they have to be in the right location. They, they wouldn't be here if they didn't have that, that nice chunk of land out there, you know, right, right, right on the highway talking to us. They, you know, you know, they could, they could go to other municipalities and find that.
Would you be willing to answer that?
Yeah, more than happy to, more than happy to. So, in all cases, when I'm building the Ricky Rockets here in Illinois, I am getting almost in every case, three licenses. It's, it's absolutely imperative to me to have that. I would have not at all come to this location or to McHenry without that. I absolutely, one hundred percent, am reinvesting that money in these properties, okay? I am one hundred percent counting on it, but I'm not taking it off. I'm actually reinvesting it. My big thing is I'm really trying to build something beautiful and spectacular. And we just did the M'Lothian one, we've priced it out, it's sixteen point four million dollars. It's on sixteen and a half acres. It's almost identical to this, I would say, really close.
It's six acres, so it's very comparable.
Very comparable. So, you know, could I chop three million dollars off that? Absolutely. Do I want to? Absolutely not. I mean, what, at least what I'm trying to do, okay? I'm, I'm taking that money and I'm actually reinvesting it in, in the community, okay? Now, I'm not going to say everyone's doing that. I know all about the gaming. I'm, I'm actually a terminal operator in the, in the state of Illinois, I'm the fifth largest one. So, I can address your fee thing, you know? Are, are you guys at twenty-five dollars, where are you at?
Hundred.
A hundred? You know, you know, I'll be very honest with you, I could tell you it's palatable and not. No one's going to move out no matter what you raise them to, you know? But in all fairness, I know the numbers in your town, I know the cafes do. You know, going even to a five hundred dollar fee, you know, would be very palatable, okay? There's guys that, there's towns of a thousand, it gets really hard as well. So, it depends on how you want to measure it.
Well, would it be, be fair, I, I would just
You, you guys do whatever you want, I'm just speaking, so, you know.
I appreciate your
That's a whole nother thing. I'm just telling you as an operator, when it comes to my customers too, you know, to charge a guy five thousand dollars, you're already getting a, 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 you know, a part of that money in the state's getting a part. You know, when we address how many to have and what's fair, honestly, the liquor license way, it's the hundred percent way. I mean, you're in control of your liquor licenses, who gets them through dozens. The reason that you give them or don't, I could tell you I wouldn't have come in the town. I could tell you that one, my best friend owns Alacard Entertainment, which is Moretti's and Cadillac Ranch, and, you know, and own Excalibur. And he doesn't want to go into any towns now that doesn't have gaming. He won't consider going. The only one he went in that I know of in all this time was Rosemont, he's putting one. But they gave him a lot. I mean, they gave him a real lot, way more than he would probably ever get from gaming. Morton Grove, he's building a brand new beautiful place. They gave him the, the liquor license and the, you know, help with the Moretti's. And then they, and then also they gave him, because he bought another lot for parking, they gave him a cafe license to help him pay for everything. There's really good things that do come with the gaming. One thing I really would like to stress is the minimum money, and again, the cafes do more, and actually, McHenry does pretty well, average per day. But the average per day in the state of Illinois is a hundred and twenty-four dollars per machine. That's seven dollars in a sixteen-hour day, that's seven dollars and seventy-five cents an hour that the machine actually makes. Thirty percent of that goes to the state, that's two dollars and thirty cents roughly. Two dollars and seventy-one cents comes to me, two dollars and seventy-one cents goes to the establishment at the old site you're on. So, when you look at these things and when you think of the monies and you think of all those, you know, different, you know, because sometimes people just don't look at it the same way. I was in the amusement business, back in nineteen seventy-eight, I had machines that made a hundred dollars a day. Pac-Man, you know, and Asteroids. Those machines cost twenty-five hundred dollars. These machines cost, all in, about seventeen thousand per machine. So, there's a lot of variables, so I just, I'm passionate about it, I apologize if I'm being honest with you, but
No, thank you very much.
And, and just to follow up, I totally agree with you, understand where you're coming from. You came into town, you saw this big plot of land that you could do something like what you visualized doing. Because if it's not there, I mean, you, you need that space.
Correct.
You know, to do something like, like you have down in M'Lothian. Because in Hoffman Estates, it was, I mean, I, I don't know how long, I know you probably built that before gaming, correct?
I built that, like you said, not considering the gaming
Yeah.
as much. But again, I spent seven point two million dollars there. The town gets about twenty-five thousand a month in all of the, their fee that they get from that, that sales tax, they have an additional gas tax, their gaming tax, I count it all. So, the mayor is absolutely thrilled. He'd come and speak for, honestly, for this. But remember, I said there's things that I didn't have and things that I wouldn't do again. And these are the things that I'm talking about. Now, I'm spending more than twice the money, okay? And I know I need these things, okay, in order to pay for them because I really want to do them. And it's a funny thing, and trust me, I'm not upset about it, I'm happy, okay? I, in a lot of cases, end up only making one percent. You know, I do a million dollars a month and take ten thousand dollars a month, okay? That's a fine line, you know, that's a fine line. I put down, you know, I have over two point five million dollars in equity in that thing, four point seven million dollars in loans. And there was a lot of room for me to do better without just everyone else doing better. That's why I look at these things and they're important to me. I could tell you, and I'm not trying to be rude, I'm being very honest with you. I would not, with you, did not have gaming, if you did not approve what I needed, I couldn't do the project. I would take the chance, it would have been too big of a chance for me to invest that kind of money without making sure that my family would be okay, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So, so is the next acceptable step for David and our staff to gather the information you've asked for, some comparisons on the things that you've identified, and I'll bring it back to the council? Is that, I agree with that? Is that adequate? Okay.
If we have a question or two or a statement for David, we can contact him or just shoot him an email.
I'd say go through Derek.
Go through Derek first. Okay, fine.
Can I say one more thing? There's definitely towns that do the square footage, okay? The biggest mistake you could make, okay? There's only a few towns that do this. And I'm just telling you, you're really going to limit yourself. I mean, where people will not come. And that's with, and there's only two or three towns that do it, but you will find out about it, and I'm going to tell you about it. They make you wait a year at least before you get gaming. And that is going to, now you're taking your chances to even have someone ask you where you would have the choice, and you're taking it away. So I would say that's a killer. And I definitely wouldn't go over 1,500 square feet. Would be the maximum I would go. Again, without limiting yourself. Because you'll get smaller establishments that won't be able to come because, you know, they can't do 2,000, they can't do 3,000 square feet. So that would be...
Thank you. And further, Alvin Schaefer?
I did it while you're here. Thank you for sharing all that. You, I think, briefly mentioned that some places you've gone to actually have a cafe liquor license or to that effect.
Liquor licenses for a cafe, like a Cellus.
Yeah, see, we don't really have that. That's just something I wanted to, you know, that might be something to think about, too. Another class.
Okay. So add that to the list, and so...
If that's out there, is what I'm saying. It's up for research.
So we'll come back...
Thank you.
...when they've gathered that information and continue the discussion. Are we good?
Appreciate that.
All right. The next item then is mayor's statement reports. The only thing I have this evening is to tell you that Halloween is October 31st, and that's when the city of McHenry will be celebrating Halloween. So trick or treat on October 31st from 4 to 7. Any committee reports this evening, Alvin Macdon?
Just that we had the last community development committee meeting of the year, and the minutes from that and the previous one will come forward when...
Thank you. Any other committee?
There's finance and personnel committee meeting tonight. Get that out.
Okay, thank you.